Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 7th. I am your board chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair, Rick Vest, and Commissioners Matt Schulte, Roma Amundson, and Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written material will be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Reading options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. This is to item one, minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on April 30th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain as I wasn't present.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero with an abstention. Item two, claims, approval of the claims processed through May 7th, 2024, and I'll note there'll be an amendment for payroll.
I would move approval of the claims processed. I move approval of the claims with the addition of payroll dispersments processed through May 1st, 2024.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-18-0155 with Graybar Electric Company for electrical lighting, data communications, security products, and related products and services, C-20-0232 with Urtac USA Incorporated for soil stabilization for the county engineer, C-17-0870 with Maximus Consulting Services Incorporated for professional consulting services to provide cost allocation plans and collection from programs in which the county operates with outside funding for fiscal years 2024, 2025, and 2026, C-22-0863 with McKesson Medical Surgical Government Solutions LLC to provide medical supply solution, B, right away contracts with the following, Robert A. and Sherry S. Martin, North 27th Street and Mill Road, in the amount of $748, and Lester and Georgia Langus Estate, Olive Creek Road, South 148th Street, in the total amount of $308, C, change order three to county contract, C-23-0508 with Bauer Underground Incorporated, to extend the final completion date to 30 calendar days after Bauer Underground receives notice from the county to proceed with installation of conduit along South 68th Street between Roca Road and Martell Road, and finally D, receive and place and file the following reports, clerk of the district court, assessor, register of deeds, records and information management, the annual report on community redevelopment project for the village of Hallam, and the 2023 tax increment financing report for the city of Lincoln.
I move approval of the consent items.
Second.
I'd just make a comment. I took a moment to review some of the reports and the records and information management. Interestingly enough, it looked like scans are up about 40% over two years ago, and this month's storage is down quite a bit. So, just kind of interesting thing to note there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four, new business. Item four A, a resolution in the matter transferring appropriations from the general fund miscellaneous budget to the Board of Equalization and county court budgets. The amount to be transferred is $550,000.
All right, good morning. Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Director. This resolution here is just kind of the first of the resolutions you'll see as we get closer to finishing out our fiscal year end. So, as we've talked about, county courts dealing with the legal services amounts increasing at a faster rate, as well as on the BOE side, the estimates for the coordinator and the referees were just underestimated this year. So, it's just to cover those costs. The transferring additional appropriations just come from the contingency amount that we set aside. This is just making sure those two budgets are within their allowable expenditures.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For B, a resolution in the matter authorizing the county board chair to sign the environmental professional services agreement supplement two to amend county contract, C-23-0010 with Felsberg Holtenolvik.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This item and the item that follows it are in regards to improvements to North 14th Street. This is a federal aid project, so I just want to remind you that it's an 80/20 split, so 80% of it will be paid by federal aid.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For C, is the professional services agreement supplement two to amend county contract, C-23-0010 with Felsberg Holtenolvik. By adding environmental services as outlined in exhibit A, the total cost for the agreement is not to exceed $112,120.31.
Move approval.
Move approval of this one as well. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four D, wire line crossing agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company to allow the county to construct, maintain, and operate an underground fiber-optic wire line crossing at mile post 46.16 in Raymond, Nebraska.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This agreement is, Dawn, did you want to speak to this agreement? This agreement is for the wire crossing of the Lancaster County broadband project underneath the railroad in Raymond.
Good morning. This is Dawn Ferris. This was the permit 99, the final permit for Union Pacific in the northwest quadrant. And this license agreement is the final piece. Bauer Underground would have this done within 30 days, so it'd be completion by the end of the month. The only other change order was the first one for South 120th, so, but I can give an update on that later.
It's marvelous that we are progressing this well. This is, when we start approaching finality, that's nice. I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you, Dawn.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four E, sales quotation from Siler for annual technical support, software maintenance, and warranty for the county engineers' tremble software and hardware. The cost of the county is $8,262.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is our annual quote we get from Siler. This is for updating our GPS equipment. This is for the hardware, software, and our warranties.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For F, agreement with RL Keith Consultant Incorporated for professional appraisal review services for federal aid project HSIP 5282 CN 13391. The cost of the county is not to exceed $28,450.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Sometimes I feel bad about the clerk having to read off all those project numbers. But nevertheless, this is continued progression on our Saltilla Road project from South 27th to South 68th Street. This is for appraisal review services. Again, this is a federal process, so it does have a lot of steps, extra steps in it that we, you maybe wouldn't see in a normal project, and because we have an agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation as well as the Federal Highway Administration, because these are highway safety improvement funds, we have to keep bringing these forward. And so, here's one more. One more agreement, one more step closer to the project.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For G, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award and execute a purchase order to Truck Center Companies for four, 442025 or newer Freightliner dump trucks in the amount of $965,196.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, we first brought the purchase of these dump trucks to you in February. And since then, we have received notification from the vendor, and I have verified that there is a nationwide shortage of Allison transmissions. And in fact, the waitlist on one of these is 18 to 24 months right now, which is unfortunate. I want to be really transparent with all of you, because this isn't how we've done business before. But in this case, I don't think it makes sense to encumber funds for two years while we wait for these trucks. Nevertheless, we still need to order them and get in line. And so, we will not be encumbering the funds in our current year's budget for these trucks. We will be encumbering the funds in a future budget.
Okay, move approval.
Second.
I have a question. I just wanted to know, clearly this is going to be a longer time than anticipated. The trucks you're using will last that long? Or how does this affect that?
Well, obviously, we need these trucks now in order to continue to ensure the resiliency of our fleet. We're just going to keep duct tape and bailing wire in the trucks together. The trucks in our fleet, that these trucks would replace are in not awesome shape now, and they spend a lot of time in the shop, and it's unfortunate, but we're just going to have to do the best we can.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Brings us to four H, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award a contract to Constructors Incorporated for replacement of county bridge Q110 in the total amount of $1,746,266.59.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Bridge Q110 is the last bridge that was closed in the 2019, from the 2019 floods. And so, it's been quite a journey in the last five years to get, what was 28 bridges either repaired or replaced in order to restore the resiliency to our system. Incidentally, I was a little concerned because we're a little superstitious in engineering sometimes, and we think, hey, when you finish one emergency, you start another one. And we received the bids for this bridge at 2:00 on Friday, the day of the tornadoes. And so, I'm going to continue my superstition about completing emergency projects. A few things about this bridge, it is going to be a county bridge match program bridge. That was an additional assignment by Nebraska Department of Transportation, so we will be receiving a $250,000 grant for this bridge replacement. In addition to that, given that in this five years from when we originally designed the bridge, the area around the bridge has grown so dramatically, we did, in the approval process from Nebraska Department of Transportation, add an extra beam to the bridge. And we did that so that the bridge could be just a little wider, so that it, in the future, could pass three-lane traffic.
You help me understand, numbered bridges sometimes are hard to know where they are. Where approximately is Q110?
So, Q110 is on Pine Lake Road, about 120th Street.
Okay.
And actually, I'll also add that we had estimated the cost of this bridge to be around $2.3 million. By the way, that's less one beam. We got eight bidders on this bridge, and the bidding was very aggressive. The separation between the most qualified low bid and the second one was $6,000.
Geez, I'm in $1.8 million project.
Super aggressive.
It was actually good for us to wait a bit.
We have been blessed this year with receiving very aggressive, very aggressive pricing on our bridges. And so, that's why, as I come forward to you with my budget, in the next few weeks, you're going to see some additional requests, why we have good pricing out there.
And I do have a question regarding, I noticed on the documents that they are planning, it's between October 2025 and January 1st of 2024 to January 1st of 2025. Is that really locked in?
Well, Commissioner Amundson, that depends on birds.
That's what? Birds?
Birds and bats. So, we did go past the April 1st deadline on this, and if I could have been able to drop this bridge before April 1st, so that I could guarantee there were no birds or bats in the area, because the area's not been open in a substantial period of time.
Yeah, that's right.
We could have a better handle on that. That being said, we may be able to start earlier if the contractor is willing to certify with a professional that there are no birds or bats on this bridge.
Okay. Well, I have a deeply vested interest in this particular bridge. I will definitely move approval.
Second. Also, I just want to emphasize, 28th Bridge is the last one. How do you feel about that, Pam? That's going to feel pretty exciting.
It's a major accomplishment. We're super fortunate with the construction season this year. I think we have a good chance, if we can get a break with this rain, to opening three bridges in May, which will bring us to five bridges this calendar year, which is super significant. It feels better facing the continued weather challenges that we're going to have, having a system that is incrementally more resilient. And it's really been an ant and a rubber tree plant journey for not only myself, but the engineers in my office who push these projects forward, and then also, as you, the commissioners, as I repeatedly come before you and ask for funding for these bridges. It's been a big deal.
Very good. I believe we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four I. These are two appointments to the Indigent Defense Advisory Committee for a term from May 20th, 2024, to May 20th, 2027, for Sarah Newell and Stanton Peter.
Any chance either one of those folks are here?
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, as always, you know, these are voluntary positions, and we go through the list repeatedly of people who give their time and their experience for the betterment of the community, and our appreciation to Sarah and Stanton for stepping forward here.
Okay. Yeah. It's a very needed service, and we appreciate the people who are doing. No further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four J, an authorization of the payment of $23,000 from the inmate benefit fund to Good News Jail and Prison Ministries of Fairfax, Virginia for providing chaplaincy services for Lancaster County Corrections inmates.
Good morning. Brad Johnson, Director, Lancaster County Department of Corrections. I have Sheldon and Maria with me. We're just here to ask that you guys approve transfer of funding from our inmate benefit fund to help support the services that Sheldon and his team provide at the jail as far as religious services and providing the items that staff, or I'm sorry, that inmates need to practice their religion and faith. So, it's something that we've done for many years, and we appreciate the work that Sheldon has done and the team that he has within the jail. They do a lot of good work for us, and I think that service provides a lot of comfort and continues faith walks for individuals within our care to help them reintegrate back into the society that, you know, that they were taken away from. So, I would just ask that you guys approve that. I don't know if Maria or Sheldon have much they want to add.
I returned to this position 13 years ago, and during that time, this board has been both supportive and generous, and it means a great deal, because we do raise our own support. We're not a burden to the county in terms of financial support in any other way. And so, this type of support, faithfulness, generosity, it means a great deal to us, takes a large load off of us so that we can concentrate better on what's going on in the jail.
You know, and I can remember from the time that I was here, that you've come forward. And so, that is a very needed service, and you continuously provided those services. And so, we're very appreciative of that. I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
We just deeply appreciate your ongoing service to the
Welcome.
folks who are housed there, and it's, I'm honored to play our small part in helping you be successful.
You're welcome.
It does an enormous amount of good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item 4K, a memorandum of understanding between Lancaster County Corrections and Lancaster County Community Corrections regarding the use of Lancaster County Corrections NCIC terminal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Kilpatrick with Community Corrections. Brad Johnson. This agreement, let me back up. The FBI and State Patrol have now recognized our pretrial agency as a law enforcement agency. They provided us with an ORI number, which is required for us to access NCIC terminals. We've worked out an agreement with Corrections to use their terminal in lieu of us getting a terminal installed within Community Corrections. Part of the thought process on that is, State Patrol has identified it's going to be about 16 months, and eventually, all of the NCIC terminals will be accessible through the cloud. And instead of spending the money to incorporate a terminal within our building, we could just use the jails. They've been very gracious. Any pretrial staff will, of course, be certified, and we'll be providing a list to Corrections.
So, yeah, we would just ask that you guys, I mean, this is a simple agreement. It's to help them do pre-arremond screens and provide information to the judges as regards to bonding information, in hopes that maybe we can get some folks out with, you know, on some type of release program. So, we were very excited to try and work with them and figure out a way that we can share the resource that we have at the jail and provide that access. This was just something that the State Patrol, who regulates that, asked that we, you know, go through, basically jump through these hoops and have some agreements between us, so that everybody understands what the expectations are. And so, we're here in front of you now, just to give us approval on that.
Excellent example of inter-agency cooperation and communication in the benefits of the entire group. I was really good for the community.
Yes.
Really good for the community. And so, I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I think it's great. Hearing nothing else? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Brings us to four L, a contract with Securitas Technology Corporation to provide proximity readers. The cost of the county is not to exceed $48,134.95.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Alexander, Director of Lancaster County Youth Services Center. This was an item that we addressed at my mid-year fiscal review, if you recall, and you all gave us a thumbs up, and so, we're finally here today. It's going to really help relieve some of the pressure on our control room operators. It's going to help the staff move more efficiently throughout the building, so we appreciate your support in this.
We appreciate your calling attention to this situation and taking action and make these improvements. And we're still friends.
100%. 100%.
So, I move approval.
Second.
I think this is a great opportunity to increase security there, as well as make, like you said, efficiency of staff. I've been in the facility before, having to wait for a door to be opened because of something else going on the other side of the building that will allow your staff, nobody from the public release or anything like that to move through the building, but your staff to move more efficiently, so.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely supportive.
Absolutely. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to four M, in agreement with Midwest Alarm Services on behalf of the Lancaster County Election Commission for burglar alarm system monitoring. The cost of the county is $3,800 for a five-year term.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. The county does have a number of contracts with Midwest Alarm Systems. The election commissioner has not been part of those contracts, and this contract is to add those burglar alarm monitoring services for five years.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is the following recommendations from Personnel Policy Board. There are a series, and I'll go ahead and read all into the record. One is to request to create the classification of a licensed alcohol and drug counselor. Two, request to amend the following county rules, Rule 4.30. Rule four point three, powers and duties, four point eight, hearings, nine point one, promotion, seventeen point eighteen, longevity, seventeen point twenty-six, the referral bonus pilot program, eighteen point four, qualification for holiday pay, nineteen point seven, special leave, nineteen point eight, paid parental leave, and rule nineteen ten, nineteen point ten, absence without leave. And then three, a request to amend the following human resource policy bulletin items for the election of Personnel Policy Board members by classified employees, and rule seventeen, the overtime pay policy.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That is presumably N, N one, two, and three, and all of the lettered items with them.
Right.
Does that work? Okay, the county attorney says that works.
Sorry. I think we do want to talk about, I want to talk about some maybe additional changes to rule four point eight. I don't know if Ms. McIntyre wanted to talk about additional changes to four point three and four point eight as well.
Yeah, I'd like to talk briefly about four point three. On four point three, I just wanted to amend the language just to provide some clarity that's in front of you today, where it says affirm or deny in the document to change it to recommend approval or denial of. And then where it says, uh, human resource bulletins and amendments, just strike amendments because it should say personnel rules, regulations, and human resource policies. So if we could just switch out anywhere it says affirm and deny with that, recommend approval or denial of, and then that other section, if that would be agreeable.
This is a change that's different than what we talked about on Thursday, or what?
No, this, this is reflecting what we talked about on Thursday.
That's what I thought.
And that's the language that's before us, right?
No, it's not.
It's not.
It's slightly different, right?
So.
The language that's before you is how it came out of Personnel Policy Board, and I want to make a slight change to that.
Explain it again, then, the change you look at.
So the second paragraph, I'll read it in full, how it would read with the changes I'm recommending. It'd say, "The Personnel Policy Board has a duty to recommend approval or denial of all matters regarding the adoption or amendment of personnel rules and regulations and human resources policy bulletins. Should the board fail to recommend approval or denial of these matters, it shall be considered a denial." That would be the end result of the language.
If I may approach, I've printed off copies showing what this is, the Personnel Policy Board's recommendations, and then the changes that Ms. McIntyre is talking about. So if you look at rule four point three, you'll have some language struck. So to be very clear once again, this is the language that the Personnel Policy Board did recommend, and now Ms. McIntyre is talking about some additional modifications.
I would like to make a motion to amend four point three as recommended in this document that's been presented to us, I would say.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the initial motion of approval. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion to amend carries.
Okay, so now, now the motion before us is to approve all of these with four point three as amended, and then there was a second one that you wanted to go over?
Yeah, I want to talk briefly about four point eight. I realized last night when I was looking at the language in A, that what got approved by Personnel Policy Board, and it starts
This is four point eight, eight A?
Four point eight A, correct.
All right.
Four point eight A, what came out of Personnel Policy Board, where it starts kind of mid-paragraph, "A hearing shall be held within thirty working days after receipt of set appeal." It ends with the
Hold on.
That's B.
Is that B?
I'm sorry, that is B. My apologies. That is B.
That's, that's, I'm looking at B.
Yes.
Okay, keep going. I just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing.
Nope, B. So it is not exactly reflective of what came out of Personnel Policy Board, so I want to let you know exactly what came out of Personnel Policy Board, but then I have a recommendation to amend what came out. So I'm going to read to you exactly as it came out of Personnel Policy Board, and then make my recommendation to amend that. So it, it should state, "Request for a hearing date or time that is different from the board's regularly scheduled meeting shall be made to the Human Resources Director." What, and right now it says, "Who will consult with the Chair." That is not the language that came out of Personnel Policy Board. What came out, "If a dispute arises relating to the hearing time or location"
Okay, you're, you're, where are we here? Because like, what am I?
It looks like we're missing B on the printed one. That's where it's getting drawn.
Oh, it's on, yeah, we've got it in the link.
I have it, I have it here on electronically.
It starts
Oh, no, we're not missing B. B was just put into
This was not
It was the formatting, the formatting's wrong on the, on the printed off one.
Okay, now I see B.
Okay. So, so you're saying, following where it says date of hearing?
Yep, "A hearing will be held," it's kind of in, right after hearing. "A hearing will be held within thirty working days of receipt. Set appeal or grievance in such time and place shall be fixed by the Human Resources Director." It says all of that, but then what it should say, what came out of Personnel Policy Board,
And that's not, and, and we
We don't have that in here.
And that's not what's in, on the electronic version, or is here?
Correct.
Okay.
I realized last night that this language needed to, what they wanted it to read was, "If a dispute arises relating to hearing timing or location, the Chair or Vice Chair will resolve the dispute," is the language that needed to be inserted into section B.
And that should be included after Hu- Human Resources Director, period, but before "Request for a hearing data or time that is different from the board's regularly scheduled meeting shall be made to the Humans."
"To the Director will consult with the Chair." That paragraph would be deleted if we followed the recommendation from the Personnel Policy Board. Would it be helpful if I read it the entirety again?
You need to read it in its entirety into the
Let me read it in the entirety, how it came out of Personnel Policy Board, and then I'll make my recommendation for what I'd like to see changed. That would probably be easier. So, "A hearing shall be held within thirty working days after receipt of set appeal or grievance at such time and pla- and such time and place shall be fixed by the Human Resources Director." That sentence is correct, but then it should say, "If a dispute arises related to hearing timing or location, the Chair or Vice Chair will resolve the dispute." That is what came out of Personnel Policy Board. What I am recommending is that we strike that recommended language from Personnel Policy Board and leave in the language that says, "Request for a hearing date or time that is different from the board's regular, regularly scheduled meeting shall be made to Human Resources," and just end it there. Because if you think about the first sentence, we schedule it all today. It all comes in, we schedule it all, we schedule the location, the court reporter, we let the witnesses know time and date, we let the parties representing them let know time and date. So if it's going to change, and we, I act as the Secretary to the Board, it makes a lot of sense, for if we need to change something, then we schedule the original meeting, all schedule, reschedule what needs to change. And those disputes, it, it really shouldn't be disputed, right? It's whatever we end up setting up, because that's when we can get rooms and parties and people there. So that's the reason for the recommended change, is just ending it in the copy in front of you, "Made to the Human Resources Director, period," and then remove, "Who will consult with the Chair," which is an incorrect version anyway. That's not what came out of Personnel Policy Board. Does that make sense, or do you want me to walk through it one more time, what it is and what it should be, because I can certainly do that.
I think I got it. Does anyone else?
I think I have it too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Krista, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good. Yes, apologize for the confusion.
Ashley Bonay, on behalf of Lancaster County. So to be very clear once again, as Ms. McIntyre stated, these were the recommendations passed by the Personnel Policy Board. It's been a couple of weeks since they passed these. The county attorney's office has some additional recommendations as it relates to subsection O.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. So this is separate from?
It's still, sorry, four point eight.
Still four point eight, okay.
Sorry, so four point eight, subsection O, is entitled Burden of Proof.
All right, well, then, let us get there. Are these in the document we have?
Yes.
I mean, paper or electronic?
Both.
Okay.
Your changes are on paper right now.
Yeah, the changes are on the paper one.
But not on the electronic one?
Not on the electronic, but
Then, oh, I mean, if that helps.
Sorry, I thought you were just saying is
You have to run a good
My recommend, recommendation is to strike all of subsection O, entitled Burden of Proof. Burden of Proof is not part of the current rules as it relates to the Personnel Policy Board. The only contract that states there is a burden is FOP thirty-two, so obviously if there's a contract controlling, that controls that union. There's nineteen eighty-four amendments that talk about burden, and the nineteen ninety-two proposals talk about burden, but these are potentially appeals. It's even called appeals when it's disciplinary actions. Appeals don't have burdens, they have standards of review. Even looking at the current rules, when it talks about review of disciplinary actions, it says, "In such cases, the board shall affirm the action of the department head unless it is clearly established by evidence." So there's never been this burden of proof, and I don't think that should be happening now. It's more, you're appealing, you're being heard by a tribunal in an appellate position, and so my recommendation is to strike subsection O in its entirety. And if you do so, then you have to look back to subsection L two, which is still going to be on that last page. Subsection A talks about opening statement by the grievant
No, hold up, L two's not on the last page.
It's L two, subsection A. So it's the opening statement. It's A through J. So the recommendation was originally opening statement by the grievant or appellee. Well, if there's once again, not this burden, it would be grievant or appellant. Opening statement by then, subsection B says county or appellant, that would be changed to county or appellee. So essentially, the person who's appealing the decision always goes first. Not saying that's their burden, but they are always being heard first. So essentially, just switch the appellee to appellant, appellant to appellee. Does anyone have any questions on that? And finally, then, as it relates to subsection Q, decisions, I would recommend changing from what currently was proposed by the Personnel Policy Board to stating, "A majority of affirmative votes shall be required to sustain a grievance or reverse or modify a disciplinary action." And then strike all of that second sentence, saying, "A failure to reach a majority of affirmative votes would either result in a denial of the grievance or a failure to sustain the disciplinary action." Once again, working in an appellate position, if there's a majority, it gets reversed. If there's a tie, it doesn't, it stays the same. That's what happens to the court, Supreme Court, Court of Appeals, any other appellate court, so that would be consistent. Does anyone have any questions about that recommended change? So those would be the county attorney's recommendations as it relates to four point eight, uh, rule four point eight. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to amend four point eight by adopting the recommendations from the Human Resources Director and the county attorney as discussed, provided in paper by it to us.
I will second.
It seems to me like they're, they're being very thoughtful on some of these changes. I don't
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around everything here.
Sure, that's
There's a lot, and there's, we still
I almost would prefer to have it submitted again for next Tuesday and have it completely written as how it would be approved, how it should be approved.
I guess I, my understanding is that's what the paper one does.
Yes, exactly, but there have been so many
Is the paper one different from any of the recommendations that you had?
Not that I can, not that I was able to tell.
I think that's my understanding, too.
Okay. Okay.
Other than the formatting issue with B, which, I, I get it, that's
Okay.
Okay.
And I mean, I guess if we go back to the tenor of what I'm hearing, I'll, I'll say it out loud and see if that makes sense. By striking paragraph O, we are saying that there, the burden of proof, which is referenced in other parts of this contract, is, is not a burden of proof, as it is a review of the disciplinary proceedings. So we're taking out burden of proof.
Yes, and to be clear, there is no burden of proof currently in the personnel rules. That is not addressed in the current personnel rules.
So
It's not a courtroom.
Yeah, it's not a thing that we should be evaluating in this process. And then on, is it Q? What we're doing is saying, if there's not a majority of votes, to overturn the previous disciplinary decisions, then it stands.
If it's a grievance, they must have a majority to sustain the grievance, which is rule in favor of
Right.
the grievant, or to reverse or modify the discipline. They need to have a majority.
So there's three things they could take action on, they need a majority to sustain, to make their decision official.
I, I also like, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I also like the change it gives the person who's making an appeal the chance to speak first, which I think is, my understanding is significant, and for an employee to be able to stand up and say, "This is why I'm appealing this."
Yes.
And for them to start with that, I think is a good process.
And that's the purpose of this board, is to get a second opinion, I guess. It'd be one way to describe, a second opinion, and allow employees to be heard in a different environment. So making sure that they get that time to state their reasoning is valuable.
Yeah.
It seems like we're on the right track here.
Yeah, I, I
Go ahead.
Thank you, okay.
With all respect to Roma, I, I think I've got it well enough that I could vote today, so I don't
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was the main changes, the way I understand.
So we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second to adopt the changes as recommended by the county attorney's office and HR. Is there any further, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion to amend carries.
Now we
Go back.
Go back to the whole package of changes, and we already have a motion and a second on the entire package. Is there any further discussion on the broad package of changes? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, I believe that finishes new business and brings us to item five. That is public comment. Those wishing to speak in items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Quoting from the prophet Isaiah, "Woe unto them that call evil good and good evil, that put darkness for light and light for darkness." Continuing in that thread, "Woe unto them that pledge allegiance to our republic but say nothing about private secret vote counts. Woe unto them that invoke a righteous God and say nothing about private secret vote counts. Woe unto them that say nothing about the inequality of rights in private secret vote counts. Woe unto them" that say nothing about the evil of divers weights and measures in private secret vote counts. Woe unto them that pledge liberty and justice for all but say nothing about private secret vote counts that pervert all justice, judgment, and equity. Woe unto them that call private secret vote counts the people's consent. Beware ye of the leaven of Secretary Evnan, which is hypocrisy. He does unto others what he would not have others do unto him. Private secret vote counts serve private secret interests and facilitate all manner of evil, not the least of which is slavery, in all its various forms. There's a darkness hanging over our land, and it's because of private secret vote counts. It is best to repent of protecting private secret vote counts and help prepare the way for a new birth of freedom and government that is truly of, by, and for the people under God before it is too late. The Lord's sand is not too short that it cannot save his people, neither his ear too heavy that it cannot hear our cry. Think Egypt, Exodus, the Red Sea. God is perfectly capable of crushing his enemies and the enemies of his people. And that includes everyone subverting our elections with private secret vote counts that give rise to tyrants. Choose you this day whom you will serve. The false gods of private secret vote counters or the one true God who is no respecter of persons, but will render to every man according to his deeds. To them who by patient continuance and well-doing eternal life, but to them that are contentious and obey not the truth tribulation and anguish. So let it be written, so let it be done. Private secret vote counts cater to the rich because the rich can afford them.
Okay, are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on items not on today's agenda? Okay, move on to announcements.
Item six, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, May ninth, twenty twenty-four at eight thirty AM in room one twelve of the county city building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at nine AM in room one twelve of the county city building. County commissioners can be reached at four oh two four four one seven four four seven or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L N K TV. L N K TV is available on allo channel two and spectrum channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L N K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Brings us to item seven, which is adjournment.
We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. We will now begin the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, May seventh.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Reporting options are available upon request. These materials can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Commissioners, that brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the additions and deductions. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is our public hearing. The first is on the twenty twenty-four four fifty-one exemption applications on real and personal property, and they have been split into three recommended categories. Recommended for approval, recommended for approval or partial exemption, and recommended for denial.
Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-four four fifty-one exemption applications on real and personal property. Staff first.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes. Hi, we're here this morning on permissive exemptions. As you know, this is our four-year review. Many of these have been on in the past. Anything that's been approved over the last three years, this will be the first time through. With permissive exemptions, that includes educational, charitable, religious, agricultural, and horticultural societies. There were the three categories exempt, non-exempt, and partial. Some of these, there's been some changes due to what we perceive as change in use. We follow state statutes and state regs. We want to be consistent all the way through. Want to thank the staff that's worked on this, Corey, Leslie, and especially Connie. There's been a lot of follow-up on these as far as clarification through phone calls, emails, and so forth. So Corey's going to go through the, I think probably with the ones we've recommended. You probably don't have any questions, but if you do, you can, you can let us know. But otherwise, it's, you're probably going to have the questions on partial and the non-exempt. And these are merely our recommendations. You can change what we've recommended. And I'm sure you have some people here this morning to bring more information to your attention, so.
Okay. Corey Beatty with the county assessor registered deeds office, and I can kind of go through our list. There were about, I think, a total of eight hundred and fifty-ish applications received. The majority of them are on your approved list. I don't think we maybe need to go through all of those unless you have specific questions. But I can kind of start with our partial list, partial exemption. Like Dan mentioned, many of these have been having similar exemptions over the years. Not much has changed there, maybe a few little nuances, but I can go through each one of those if you have have any questions. So on the partial exemption list, Blessed Sacrament Church has a rental house that will remain taxable. Bryan Medical Center has a number of properties that they're leasing space. So any leased space for a not, for a for-profit reason, that will remain taxable. There was one property, I believe it's parcel sixteen thirty-two one oh one zero zero one zero zero three. At some point in time, the property that this is affiliated with was condoed or partitioned out in ownership. So Bryan owns just a portion of that, of the building, or using a portion of the building for an exempt purpose. The other ownership is not an exempt purpose. So we're proposing to exempt that parcel, which I believe is parking in the same percentage as the building. Okay. Camp Sunshine has a couple of parcels where they're using, they have some ag land that's being farmed. That will remain taxable. The Centurion and CHI Nebraska applications kind of go hand in hand. That's at, for property at forty fifty-five Yankee Hill Road. There is some space leased to a taxable entity. I believe the majority of it will remain exempt. And then the correlating parcel will tax that at the same percentage as the correlating parcel. Christian Heritage Children's Home has some leased agricultural land that will remain taxable. Our recommendation is it for, to remain taxable. Christian Retirement Homes has some independent living units. Those will be taxable, as well as the application for the personal property will coincide at the same percentage of exemption as the real property. Christ Place Church has some land to the west of it that will remain taxable, same percentages in past years. Church in Cry, or excuse me, Church in Lincoln is leasing space to a law firm, so that space will remain taxable. Crossbridge Christian Church has some private daycare usage. That remains taxable, that portion of the building. To a private daycare.
Okay, that just was updated.
Well, if there's someone here that can address that, maybe there's some new information.
Yeah, because that, that. I know that L B eight seven four adjusted that and made, and made that a positive affirmation of the the personal property tax exemption there, so that one.
So on their application, they just said a portion of the building's used for the daycare, and it can be taxable at a percentage determined by the assessor.
And.
So maybe we need to review, what was the statute reference or L B reference?
All right, let's do it.
While you're, while he's looking at, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So how do you identify, like, that these properties may be being used for non-taxable purposes? Like, how is that identified?
A lot of them will disclose that, like, if they're leasing space or using space for a purpose that's not exempt. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So they'll, on their application, they'll disclose that they're using so much space for a non-exempt purpose. Or sometimes it's through, you know, through word of mouth or inspections or something of that nature too. It's having a dialogue with the owners. Most of it comes to our attention.
So, I mean, I guess, so you're talking, there's two different ways. Primary, primary way that they, that they disclose on application, that's where most of them, most of this information's found out, is that?
Typically, yeah. Or if we do follow-up, you know, staff in our office, if they're talking to them on the phone or emailing back and forth, sometimes they're able to find more information pertaining to the usage of the property and/or if we send an appraiser out for an inspection, sometimes it's caught that way too, so.
Tell me more about the inspection idea, like, that if they're not disclosing it, how do you identify? Because there's a lot of nonprofits, clearly hundreds of them that have been approved, so you guys go out and inspect all of them?
No, the only time we're doing an inspection is to calculate probably the square footage that's exempt versus non-exempt. So it's not like we're going out to a, to a church and inspecting them, looking for something that's non-exempt.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then they wouldn't end up on this list based on an inspection?
If we don't know about it, yeah, I mean.
Don't trust nonprofits.
You know, this is a self-reporting application, just like a lot of our things, so.
So Corey, just unless Sean's ready.
I am, but what, go ahead.
Let me, I have one question. On this list that you were going through now, how many of these change status? I'm assuming most of them are the same as previous years?
Oh, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. Many of them would be carryovers from last year and/or the previous four-year cycle.
It's fair to say that a majority.
The majority, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't have a lot of new applications. You know, the use could possibly change in both directions. It can go from a non-exempt use to an exempt, you know, and back and forth. But sorry, I don't know the number of new applications in front of me.
I was just.
Okay.
I think you've answered the question, so.
And again, some of those that have a new application, if they checked the website and saw what our recommendation was, they might be here today to talk to you in more detail about their application too. So there might be some information gleaned from that testimony as well.
Okay, yeah, the new legislation, the following property shall be exempt from property taxes, and then it gives the big long list. But dropping down to the part I was referencing, and this is a change as of just this year, so it's easy to miss. It's a nonprofit organization that owns or operates a childcare facility. They very, they expressly enumerated that in this.
Nonprofit.
Which a church would be.
The church.
It's a nonprofit organization.
But if it's a private childcare, that's a childcare that's operating in the church, paying, paying rent to the church, essentially.
I understand that's what the one line here says, but is that, is this?
I mean, we're going off the information that we have on the application. They're saying that it would be taxable at the same percent in the past. I don't. I mean. If you, if you have different information.
I don't have any information about this one. I'm just asking about it because I know that, I know that how, how personal property tax exemptions are done on daycares and childcare facilities is different now than it was. And I'm asking, isn't, wouldn't this fall into, how does this not fall into that?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, we can.
Okay.
Hold this one and review it.
Let's hold this one and review it.
Which one was that just?
Crossbridge.
Christian Church Disciples of Christ. And are there any others here about childcare facilities? I didn't see any.
Good Shepherd Lutheran Church has space leased to private daycare.
Yeah, let's hold both of those so that we can just review.
And it's because of the daycare aspect.
Yeah, it's the daycare aspect.
When did?
Just now.
When, yeah, when did the law go into effect, the new statute?
I don't know, I'd have to. I believe so, I believe it had any clause. Okay.
And what was the bill number, Sean?
Eight seven four.
Okay, we can look at that.
I guess my question becomes, given that most of these are unchanged.
Good Shepherd Lutheran Church.
Okay, it's okay to proceed, and then we can talk through things some more, okay. Evangelical Trinity Lutheran is farming out some of their ag land, so that will remain taxable. First Christian Church of Lincoln at four thirty South Sixteenth Street, they do lease some parking stalls. I'm assuming downtown parking is usually at a premium, so I think we do have a few establishments that may have changed. Rick, going back to your question about new applications, based on the fact that we have found out that there's leased space for, you know, not just football weekends, but like Monday through Friday, people leasing the space from them. So we would recommend that those parking areas remain on the tax roll. Girl Scout Spirit of Nebraska, that's a personal property exemption application. So the equipment that's used for the retail store would remain taxable. Good Shepherd will hold off on that one pending further review. Emmanuel Retirement Communities, their facility at thirty-five hundred Faulkner Drive includes some independent units. So those will remain taxable, and then the correlating personal property will be at the same percentage of taxation. I R C Two Inc., eighty-four oh one South Thirty-third Street. Again, they have independent living units and a personal property, a correlating personal property application. So those two will be taxed accordingly. The independent living units will be taxable, or the area, the space. Same with the facility at forty-four hundred South Eightieth Street, I R C Two is the owner. Those have some assisted living units as well, I think, as independent, so the assisted living units would remain exempt. Independent would be taxable. Same with the personal property, same percentage. Lincoln City Church, they have ag lands, looks like ten acres, it's leased to a farmer, so that would be taxable. Lincoln Literacy has some non-exempt leased space. So that would be taxable, as well as L M E P. So that would be taxable, as well as LMEP, forty-six hundred Valley Road, any of the space for their for profits would be taxable. Lincoln Monthly Meeting Society has a caretaker apartment on their property that we feel would be appropriate to have that stay on the tax roll. Lux Center for the Arts has some retail space, retail gift gallery space would be taxable. Madonna has a parcel fifty-four one South Street, seventeen thirty-two four four zero 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 one, has some leased space, it looks like one thousand seven hundred twelve square feet is leased, so that would be taxable. Marion Sisters Diocese of Lincoln, they have seven acres that they rent out to a farmer, so that'll be taxable. Nebraska Communities Playhouse has some leased storage units, that's the facility in Hickman, and they have storage units on their property that they rent out. So, um, yeah, someone might be here and they can talk about that, can I get, do you want me to go through the whole list and then have people come up, or?
It it, we're gonna, I'm gonna have have the staff just finish working through the list, and then any anyone who wants to get up and talk about individual items, but we'll do that in a second.
Sure, they can explain, maybe something has changed, but yeah. Nebraska District of Lutheran Church, caretaker apartment would may remain taxable. Numesonic Temple Association, down at sixteen thirty-five L, they also lease park parking stalls to the public. So we would propose that that the parking stall space be taxed. North Star Lodge, twenty-six hundred North Forty-eighth Street, so they're leasing some space. So that would be our recommendation, that space would be taxable, Region Five at forty-four thirty-three South Seventieth. Same, they lease out some space for for-profit use or non-exempt use. School Sisters of Christ the King has some ag acres that they rent, so we would propose that being taxed, Scottish Wright is another one downtown that leases some parking stalls. So we'd recommend pulling that out and having that taxed. Slavic Christian Church at thirty-one oh one, thirteen oh one Raymond Road, excuse me, they have some ag acres that are being leased for farming. South Point Christian Church, some self-storage units, that's at seventy-seven, or excuse me, seventy seventy Helen Witt Drive. So those would be taxable, Saint Joseph Institute has some space that they use for storage for their retail establishment, for their thrift store, so that portion would be taxable. United Methodist Church in Martel, they have a rental house. So they're currently renting what I think formerly maybe was used as a parsonage, so right now if they're renting it out, that would be taxed. And then Vital Services Inc. at sixty-four hundred Cornesker Highway has space, they're leasing to for-profits, and we'd recommend that that be taxed. Okay. So I can get my stuff out of the way, and if somebody else has some.
Let's just quick go over the denials, then we'll take everyone's individual items as they come up.
Okay, on the denials.
There's a lot fewer of those.
Sure, so Goodwill Industries submitted an application and do believe both of Goodwills are new this year. So the first one is for a retail store at sixty-three hundred Apples Way, I believe that's off, what, Sixtieth and the former Highway Two in that area? So retail, not exempt, so we're recommending denial on that application. They also submitted an application for what is a vacant lot, I believe at the northeast corner of eighty-fourth and Adams, that is not being used for any exempt purpose at this time, so we'd recommend denial.
Are so are Goodwills other locations not exempt?
I don't know if any of their other locations are owned by them, they might be owned by somebody else and they might be renting it out. Yeah, I don't believe so.
Cuz there's a few that are, few locations that are listed as approved.
Okay, what are those locations? I don't have that in front of me.
First section.
So they might have some administrative offices?
There's two properties listed as approved, I don't, I mean, I see the property ID numbers, but that's all I see.
Okay. Heartland Bible Church. They have, there's there's a house on that property, it's not being used, no one's living in it as of when they applied anyway, or when we reached out and had our last contact with them, I think that's at twenty-six twenty-one South Fifty-six, so we would say that the the house would be taxable.
If someone were, if a pastor, for example, were to occupy the house, then it would be tax exempt, so how does a church like that go about getting this changed if if it does start to get used appropriately?
Contact our office. Yeah, if the if the use of the property changes, and I do believe there's a deadline for that, so in order to get exemption for the twenty twenty-four year, they'd have to let our office know, or the the use of the property would have to change by, I think it's July first, they'd have to let us know. So Madonna, we have four properties. The first one is it's a non-buildable outlot, it has had exemption in the past, but it's a non-buildable outlot and currently has zero value. Dan and I did a drive-by, I believe it's over off of Pine Ridge Road and Norris Lane, across from Madonna Proactive. It's kind of green space right now, but it's a non-buildable lot with a zero value, we feel like it's kind of a moot point to have an exemption, there's no value on it, so they're not getting taxed on that piece of property. And, you know, vacant lots in themselves really, unless it's being used for an exempt purpose, a vacant lot is is not, is supposed to be taxable, it's not exempt. So Madonna has another vacant lot, there's three of them in fact along Normal Boulevard. And two of them have storage facilities on those lots, so we're willing to say that the the storage facilities, they're using that for maintenance of their Madonna property along South fifty-four oh one South Street. So we're willing to to say those are exempt, but there is one that absolutely is a vacant lot, so our recommendation is that that be on the tax roll. There's a house at fifty-four thirty-four Normal Boulevard. At the time of application was vacant, was disclosed that it's vacant, so unless something has changed, we would recommend that that stay on the tax roll. And then they also have, I believe they purchased it maybe last year, along Fifty-sixth Street, twenty-three fifteen South Fifty-sixth Street. I think it had a house on it, it was demoed at some point in time, and it's currently a vacant lot, so we'd recommend that that stay on the tax roll until the property's being used for an exempt purpose, so. Okay.
Also on the four fifty ones?
So, yeah, may have some additional testimony now.
Sure, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the four fifty-one exemption applications? We'll start with you and then. Everyone's gonna get a chance, come on up, yep.
We'll need to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and sign in.
Tom Osaski. Thank you all. I am the new artistic director for Nebraska Communities Playhouse, they brought me in starting last August, I've been working from afar and I just have moved to, back to Nebraska, I'm originally from here, and taken over there. So in that process of post-COVID reorganizing of the theater, we have made some changes. One of the changes that I made, starting earlier this year, was to no longer use the storage facilities. So we had six people renting those storage facilities this year. They received a letter from me in March saying that we were no longer going to be doing that, but we gave them until the first of June to move out all of their stuff out of the storage units. So we are no longer in the storage unit business.
So if I understand, Cory, you're, I'm gonna lean on you here. If they notify your office before July first, or does this?
I think, I would think, and I'm not the attorney, but I would think his testimony would suffice you ultimately make the final decision on these applications based on what we're hearing today, so.
Okay.
So we could potentially strike that one from the, move it to the approval, full approval?
You have that authority, yes.
Gosh, we have authority, yes. Okay. Well, congratulations on coming back, the Nebraska Community Playhouse, where is that located?
This is in Hickman, right downtown in Hickman, and we, if you haven't seen our season, we have jam-packed it full of of shows this year, and so come on down and see a show, we're doing seven shows this year, and we'll probably do a couple, add even a couple more next year. So we'll be using the new venue and the old venue and running simultaneously, we just opened The Table, which is a new musical this past weekend and is getting great success, so.
Thank you, great, all of these add to the life of our community, so it's really great to have that successful. And your testimony today is that you're no longer leasing the six storage units that
Correct.
And you'd like tax exemption for that?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other members, yeah, come on up.
The community.
If you are planning on speaking, just you can kind of move to the front of the room now, I mean, there's no.
We got two mics.
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name.
My name is Scott Hecht, I'm pastor of Heartland Bible Church. And last August about we purchased property of twenty-six twenty-one South Fifty-sixth Street, directly south of our church. Ultimately, we purchased that for the purpose of parking for our church. We've been deliberating as a church between, there's a house on that property as well, do we want to use that for an intern to live there? Parsonage, or what? And we have been using it. I guess you could say unofficially, people are pulling in the big backyard for some parking, basically ever since we acquired it. We also currently use it for some storage of lawn equipment. We have determined to go ahead with the city planning department to try to get it all parking. That's we'd like to have it as, we're working with the city planning department for that. One question that we still had was if it would take, let's say, a year for that whole process to unfold before we could get it all parking, would we want to rent out that house in the meantime? That's still a little bit of an open question, but our our goal is, as soon as possible, we'd like to put it as parking, all parking, remove the house, and therefore be exempt.
And so right now, we're talking about, this is the property that that is just received denial, just received denial.
Right, right, yeah.
No part of it has been approved, okay.
Right.
And so, I mean, when parking's approved, that's when they approve to you?
Talking about the house, right?
Right, no, I know.
Yeah, the property has a house on it.
Parking is part of, I believe, the the other property, this, we're just specifically pulling out the house because it wasn't being used for an exempt purpose, and he's telling you what the plans for the house are, but we don't know what the timeline is for that.
No, I get that, my question, my question here is why is this one on the denial list rather than the partial approval list? That that's my question.
Oh, because he's saying that they're parking in the yard currently.
Right, it's it's not a formal thing, just some people, we don't have it paved or anything, we're trying to get it all approved by the city, but there is parking. We're letting people, we're not telling people, but we're letting people park in the yard right now, like on a Sunday, there might be ten people parking there or something like that.
It's a separate parcel from your church property, correct?
Right, it's a new purchase property, directly south of our current church.
Jacent to your church property.
Right.
Okay.
And you are, you you also said that the house is being used for storage?
Storage of some lawn equipment currently, like in the garage of that property.
I mean, it it. I I don't know where to draw the line when approved uses take over versus like. I'm just gonna keep looking at you, Dan. Your day doesn't get better.
There's more than one Dan here.
Dan, I'll swear again. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Dan Zieg Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Admittedly, these do get to be kind of sticky situations and there's lines not always super clear. This is one where I'm kind of hearing it sounds like I could see it getting towards that that exemption. I think we'd like to have maybe a few more conversations with the church and kind of get a better idea of what their timeline is and see some steps being taken to that being moved to truly being a an exempt use. Again, that can be accomplished though later this year, again, they'd have the option to go to Turk, and we can make that adjustment there, we've done that before on exemptions and stuff, so. I'm hearing a lot of stuff that sounds like it's moving toward exemption, just not, may not be there quite yet. So I think this is probably appropriate to keep it on the denial list for the time being, knowing that we can continue these conversations and maybe move it towards exempt.
And can you confirm July first is a deadline for us on that? Okay. Oh, okay. So our options would be to either nigh approve it. We've also talked about having some pulled off the list to be reviewed, is that something we can do?
We can add that to that to that list as well, and see if we can get that resolved before then.
Yeah, would it would it mess anything up if we came back in three weeks to talk over these three properties?
No, that's fine.
Or two weeks, I mean.
I was gonna say, do these applications, I think, yeah, two weeks, we have to act before June first, yeah.
I said, I said three, I meant two, yeah, next next BOE.
I guess I could see us doing that along with these two other churches that have daycares, like just pull it off the list, we can come back on it, give them a chance to work it out a little bit more.
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yeah, come on up.
Morning. My name is Aaron Lunicky, I'm with Lincoln.
He's gotta swear again.
Before you start, so sorry. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and sign in.
Sure, Aaron Lunicky. So it's more of a clarification for me, just so I understand the partial exemption, thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate the application. Form four fifty-one, what what came to my attention was looking at the property taxes that LMEP has paid over the course of really the last fifteen years and noticing the significant acceleration, and the two.
I'm sorry, which, what are we talking about?
This is LMEP, forty-six hundred Valley Road. Their Lincoln Medical Education.
Found it, yep.
No problem, sorry for that.
Good, you're good.
So what I'm looking at specifically, his LMEP is, if you're not familiar with it, is a partnership between Bryan Medical and Saint Elizabeth's. And so with it, it truly is, it's a graduate medical education program. They have the older facility that was built in nineteen sixty-something, and then the newer one that was in the mid-nineties. With it, the older facility, because of a number of reasons, is rented out primarily to nonprofits, and again, thanks for the partial exemption on that one. I just want to understand the application of the property tax levy. What I have seen is from two thousand nine through two thousand nineteen, the total property taxes they paid were under nine thousand dollars, but from twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, I'm so sorry, through twenty twenty-three, property taxes were forty-three thousand five forty-nine. And so I want to make sure that I understand, when I go through budgeting as a nonprofit, you guys can appreciate that, dollars in, dollars out. I want to make sure that we understand the application of it, I understand the facility is dated, it's aging, but I would expect the property taxes to stay flat and not increase precipitously. So it's it's nothing more than just an inquiry and curiosity, I'm reading and making sure that LMEP passed the five-step test, going through the nonprofits, that it is an educational facility. The rental space, roughly eighteen percent of it goes to for-profit businesses, the rest is all non-for-profit. And if that is a sticking point, I'm sure that we can adjust what the rent rolls look like going forward, but it is very much an ancillary part of the business, it is not, it is not the primary existence of it, it is a teaching facility.
You know, I guess I don't, I don't know why the increase happened, is it did something change in how you were being assessed, or is it just the valuation increase or what?
That's, that's a good question, I'm not prepared to answer that one, I, I don't know the answer to it, and I dug into this about six months ago, I'm new with LMEP, and so this is one area where the, what I did not include in that $43,549 amount was the most recent property tax assessment we just remitted payment for, and I believe that was about $45,000, so it's, again, it's, this is just me making sure I'm checking the right boxes on the application abiding. So, not, I'm looking more for direction than anything else, but with the partial exemption, that's extremely helpful, I do believe this is an item that should be rereviewed, the, the numbers just don't check out, they don't make sense to me.
You know, did something change in how you were using the space back in 2019, or, or from 2019 to 2020?
Yeah, that's a really good question, I don't believe so, I can double-check the, the occupancy of it, and just make sure that if they were all for-profit businesses that were in that rental space, I can certainly check, but even at that, for a business that has, I believe, an assessed value of 7.8 million, and roughly 50% at any given time is all for graduate medical education, I, I would still have a hard time believing that we would rent out all four floors for for-profit businesses, but it is possible, I can certainly verify that.
I just don't know, yeah.
So that, that's what I wanted to bring before the body this morning, for you guys to review, and also just for me to follow it back afterwards.
Sure.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on the 451 applications? No one else wishing to speak on the 451s? Okay, with that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on the 451 exemption applications, unless the, the assessor's office didn't have anything else? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing then, and we will move on to the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Give a missus for the record, the following motor vehicle tax exempt applications are for First Baptist Church, American National Red Cross, Lincoln Lancaster County Habitat for Humanity, Grace Evangelical Lutheran Church, School Sisters of Christ the King, New York Blood Center Incorporated doing business as Nebraska Blood Bank, Lincoln Medical Education Partnership, Redeemer Lutheran Church, Slavic Christian Church, Family Services Association of Lincoln, VSL Lincoln, South Link LLC, Mercy Mills of Lincoln, First Slavic Baptist Church, St. Teresa Catholic Church of Lincoln, and Lutheran Family Services of Nebraska Incorporated.
Anyone wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Any members of the public wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close that public hearing and move on to item four.
Item four is action on the following, the first item being 4A, the 2024 451 exemption application on real and personal property, and as said before, they were split into three categories, action on recommendations for approval, action recommendation for approval of partial exemption, and action on recommendation for denial.
So I'd make a motion to approve as listed with four changes, as we've discussed. First of all, three projects I'd like to just remove, so we could consider them on a future date, that is Crossbridge Christian Church, Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, and Heartland Bible Church. The fourth change would be to move the Nebraska Community Playhouse from approval of portion to approval.
I would second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, my only question with that is, I'm gonna support that, but do we want to do anything with, oh, the final gentleman who just asked?
So, the, as I, it's a little hard, cause our, the, as I look online, and maybe the county assessor can confirm this, and as I look online, it looks to me like the assessed value history that's publicly posted goes back to 2019, and it's a, there is an increase in the valuation over those five years, there's no doubt about it, but it's not to the level that he described at all, you know, it's a pretty stable, you know, and it went from $6 million to $7.8 million over five years, like that's not crazy to me.
Probably pretty anticipated, yeah.
Yeah, so as I look at the information that I've got before me right now, unless, are you, anybody in the assessor's office aware of any significant change that would have happened pri- just prior to that? Okay.
In front of us today is really the exemption part, and he was recognizing that, and, and I think cool with that, it's the valuation tax, you know, and the tax rate piece.
And that's what we have the Turk process for, and so, yeah. Okay, yeah, I think I'm, I'm fine not taking any particular action on that, then, then I would be in support of that motion and that second.
Second that.
Anybody else, any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flarrett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to 4B, action on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
I move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second that.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flarrett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, public comment, those wishing to speak at items related to county equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on items not currently on our agenda? No members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, we'll move on.
Item six is adjournment.
Move that we adjourn.
Yeah, I would second, I would just thank the assessor's office, I mean, if you look at this list of properties, I mean, it's, it's voluminous, and thanks for all their efforts on trying to get this right.
Good use of voluminous.
Was that your challenge for the day, to work that into the agenda?
I don't even know where they come from, actually, they just pop out.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flarrett?
Yes.
Motion carries.